All right, welcome everybody to the October 30th meeting. We need to go to the House of Representatives. Mayor Herndon. Vice Mayor Mamata. Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Councilmember Charado.
Present.
Dapp is present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible as a whole.
Okay, I then read the report out of closed session and directly begin on all four items listed. Item four is approval of the agenda as posted for amendment. They face that in the agenda. Any members of the public? Seeing that, I may look for approval of the agenda.
So.
Second. About Alvin's first. On favor. Item five, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within jurisdictions of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Any public comment? Okay, what we have you do is go through the podium. And I think we have a sign in sheet up there. You just state your name and sign in with your information. And then speak clearly into the microphone. Is that microphone open or is it turned off?
Make your phone numbers available.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Butler. On September 4th, 2023, I submitted a Public Records Act request to the city attorney Dwight Brenner LLP for the executed amended agreement for the promotion of tourism entered into between the City of Angels Municipal Corporation and the Calgary's Visitors Bureau, a nonprofit association authorized by Resolution 23-02 unanimously approved by the city council on January 3rd, 2023. On September 14th, 2023, I was informed by the city attorney that the city had determined my request described identifiable records that were disposable under the Public Records Act, and I was provided with a digital copy of the city council's executed resolution number 23-02. I was additionally informed on that date by the city attorney that the city was still searching its files responsive to my request for the signed tourism agreement and required as much as an additional 14 days to conduct its search. On September 27th, 2023, I was informed by the city attorney that the city did not have any additional records responsive to my Public Records Act request dated September 4th, 2023 for the executed agreement for the promotion of tourism. Quoting the city attorney, after a thorough search, staff is unable to locate the executed agreement. I respectfully request of this city council that the city resumes and successfully concludes its search for the missing agreement for the promotion of tourism so that my Public Records Act request dated September 4th, 2023 for identifiable records that were disposable under the Public Records Act may be fulfilled in time we manage. To that point, I shall plan to return to the next city council meeting two weeks from this evening on October 17th to address this in greater detail should my September 4th, 2023 Public Records Act request for the executed amended agreement for the promotion of tourism not happen that by that time. Thank you very much, and good evening. There, Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Any additional?
This. I might find that very, I was at 1840, Kellyton, Maine. But this is just in response to the concern that I think were expressed by some of the council members about the information that I have. And so I have brought, I was hoping to have the actual proposal to the city, but I don't have that yet. But this is the plan. This was done in May, and it's been sitting around for a long time. I'm going to leave it over here. I can look at it. And. And I have several, well, actually, all of the requirements that were, I was told about that, that I had to get engineers to say that what I said was right, and they changed some things that were right. There was one on solar, there was the indoor sprinkling system, just to, it's to put up ours. And there is the water well information. There's some other things that I have on this disc, and I'll leave it for you to look at. And I'm really sorry, I don't have the full proposal to get to, but I sure did work on it, and so that's what I'm trying to say.
Any public comment? So. Are you going to take this, Rose, into this negotiation?
Yeah.
Not quite.
And that's for us to keep, Mike?
For yours.
Okay, correct.
Just for the reference that that document that you left will go to our fourth thing. Or our building.
Sure, sure.
There's not four copies.
Okay.
I don't oversee that.
But I've got to put together a real proposal for the building. This is just an example.
So this is just for us to look at?
Yes.
Rose, if you can raise your hand. Yeah, yeah. Any public comment online for this? And if you can hear us online, if you do have a public comment, you can raise your hand, I believe, Rose, let's see that your hand is raised, and then we'll call on you. Seeing no additional public comment, we will move on to item six, which is consent agenda. We have two items on consent for consideration. If they have any proposal for either of each item. Any member of the public? Facing now, they're looking for a motion for consent. Question. And second, on favor, by five. Regular agenda, item seven A is the unit for part. Actually, the rural recreation and tourism program, unit part White River Mine Expansion Project update from H House.
Hey, council members, I direct to the screen. We have released a newsletter, and anybody who is watching online or is present who would like to receive updates to the burning of the park, their project to state the QR code or send email to CDIA at the screen box. And we will choose on our email list. So basically, the first part piece letter was sent out to the individual. We have also notified everybody who can proceed to the additional. The bulk of them, the two additional members. If you have a question on our report, ensure the technical firm has a back-up component. So they are looking at getting their official response by date of certain direction. My plan is stakeholders to define committees. They've had our first meeting committee that we've presented together, used to store and attribute it. Great, signed, which will reduce the design committee. And we do have our first pet ground, having playground design at the October 18th, maybe six years design, maybe eight years. And so basically, after that, we'll then start working on the outdoor exercise appointment, the corridors, the intermittent signs, and the actions happening. I would have.
Okay, question.
I have a question. Somewhere around the.
You will be able to?
Where will we be able to find that?
She will be posted online and will also be sent to everybody who's signed up with the QR. And then when I was looking at the question, I noticed the two questions. One, the rear construction, 21,245,000. Wasn't that worth? That was for paying some of their own stuff, who had been doing some actual designer, um, survey work, that type of thing. They have to pay some of that.
And then. As the Pepper's tree service, that 70,000. Yes. Our meeting last month. Able.
Um. Michelle pulled it up about the actual issue that was settled. And we better, by that, just. Black. So what happens with the tree tree is that not 100% of it was charged to the grant. It had some of its normal operations and maintenance. So there was a 770,000, which they have on.
Four to Christmas.
So then. I'm just, what I'm fearful is that last meeting was at 87,000, this one was 100%. That would expect to be very different.
Oh.
Very different.
So it's third category, general fund?
Right.
For regular maintenance?
Well, that's going to be out of general.
Well, it doesn't have.
But it doesn't have anything to do with the park. And I thought, I probably, I thought there was clarification about that, like there was some general sense of that it's in maintenance. That sometimes we see on the accounts payable, but it's not because you were outside. Okay, well, I just wanted to. Okay. Do you also want them to party with the next meeting council or?
I think there's two of them.
There's plenty.
Yeah.
There's plenty.
It makes sense, you know. Ellen, any questions?
Ellen, good.
Okay, any members of the public? Comments or questions on unit of part, please? How about anybody that's joining us online? Okay, bringing it back, this is for information only. I'd like to thank you, Amy. I think that the new information that has started to go out has really been an asset. A lot of, a lot of the questions and people at the city seem to be getting the information as, as we've done. So we've done a very good job. Thank you. That's very professional. Yeah. Okay, so come on up, I can open public comments. Perfect.
Right there, listen. I just had a quick question about the updates. How many people have signed up? Do we know that number?
Yeah, 83 have signed up. We have sent out notices to 160, and we are trying to expand it as much as possible.
And do you know how else you're getting that word out?
Website, our, come on brain, Facebook, and what else do we have? I've been constant contact, but that's how we're doing our email blast.
Okay.
Yeah. If you have another suggestion, you're welcome here. I'm assuming we will be putting the QR code up at, posting that at the post office.
But that was more like.
Yeah, that's why I.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, please. Hey, bringing on to item seven B. And this is the second reading to hold a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 534, relocating housing-related codes to a new chapter of 17.52 housing with amendments to section 1706.200, reasonable accommodation, allowing some administrative approvals and clarifying 1706170 accessory.
Mayor and council members, this is basically organizational and procedural. It takes all of the housing information we already have in our code and moves it to a new section so that it's easier for people to find housing information. And it adds a provision for reasonable accommodation that allows staff to do in-house approvals, again, reasonable accommodation of things like grants for disabled people who need to use a wheelchair, who would be able to go higher, but it's just a setback with 17.52. Now, after notifying the property owners. So that's the other change there. And again, one of our sharp eye planning commissioners has asked for a final change in section 1702-070 regarding the effective date of low barrier navigation center legislation. They've asked the words unless otherwise extended by the date handed. That's on the first page of the draft report, because otherwise it will expire in 2027, and we all. We don't know the public. Do you have anything else or any questions?
What was that in the second meeting? That one I had.
1752-070, which is highlighted page one.
Any other questions? Members of the public? Please, then, coming back, we'll be looking for approval of this ordinance.
I'll make a question before this.
Second. Do we have a question and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 40. Taking us on to item seven C. This is also a public hearing. And to waive the second reading, hold a public hearing considering adoption of ordinance 535, allowing the city planner discretion to approve additional use permits for projects valued at less than 250,000 and exempt from the California environmental quality.
Mayor and council members, we already have provisions similar to this, allowing the city planner to do administrative site plan reviews and conditional, some conditional use permits for specific purposes, administrative condition use permits. We discovered recently that we've been having a decent number of people who want salons in the building, or there are already salons, small businesses on those who want to do a new salon, and it takes an insert amount of time to go through planning position, whereas they could be allowed to do it administratively in-house to shorten the time period. Again, it's still the appeal. No, our viewers, we're even notified, we're still not checking. It is a big, it just would expedite the process for primarily various. Do you have anything else? Pretty sure. If the 250,000 is going of the business, it's out with. Is, so basically, when you apply, we talk about what the valuation of your business is. Generally, it's because you might be making minor improvements to the building, and we usually value those. If that's not the case, we can help them through a testament of evaluation of their business, we need. So. Third, tables in the building code. Still.
Questions? Any comments from the public? Okay, bringing it back, maybe looking for a motion for the ordinance on item C.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 535.
Questions from public? And I will second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, class of 40. Item 17D, this is the big one. This is to waive the first reading and hold this public hearing to consider adoption ordinance 536, renaming chapter 7.0, 17.06 as general provisions and exception, and adding, consolidating, amending, or updating provisions for mobile food vendors, garage sale, temporary construction trailers, recreation vehicles, storage and living, special events, special events permit, certificates of occupancy, storage containers, cottage food operations, and movie sets, amending and updating excessive slopes, temporary and seasonal sales stand, acceptable farming and ranching practices, construction and floodplains, occupancy changes in commercial buildings, in commercial zones, and eliminating standards for auto wrecking yards. Any?
Mayor and council members, as mentioned in the last meeting, and by the way, this is waiving the second reading, sorry. See, I had to tie. Oh, on the re, but sorry, mediation, which correct. When you do codes, there's always a bunch of stuff that you need to address that doesn't necessarily go in a nice, tidy little chapter. So everybody puts it in something called provisions and exceptions. So it is a very long chapter usually, and it usually has a very wide topic. This is very exceptional. The new things in here are storage containers, cottage food operations, and movie sets, those are the primary new items that have not been in the code before. Things that have been in the code before but are being consolidated in one place, and where we're removing redundancy, to make it clear one place, mobile food vendors, certificates of occupancy, garage sales are actually new, meaning that garage sales before, construction trailers, RVs, slopes of ordinance, always been in their home offices, been in their acceptable farming and ranching practices, codes been there, sale of alcoholic beverages, greed and prudence, destruction of floodplains, and occupants and changes in those terms. Those were already there before, and there's compelling minor changes of those. We are eliminating standards for auto wrecking yards, so it has, we no longer permit those within the city limits. So we no longer need standards. And I did want to clarify from the last meeting, I understood a question to be, where do we get some of these? For example, storage containers, cottage food operations. I took those from other jurisdictions. Storage containers named for quality accounting, cottage food operations named for the city of Sora, picked them up, dropped them in. Were those reviewed by the city attorney? Those were reviewed. Cottage food operations were reviewed in 2013 by the then city attorney of the city of Sora, and storage containers were reviewed by the council of all. So those were not reviewed by our city attorney, they were reviewed for legal content. To this chapter. I think I'll ask just if there are questions, and there is one additional change here. Cottage food operations, I did not include a provision that's on page two of your staff report. Provided planning, there's a fact that we remove a requirement that require, that did not allow cottage food operations to be within 300 feet of each other. And I will also add, cottage food operations, there's something already permitted by state law. You have an option to add conditions to them. If you do not exercise that option, you go strictly with state laws. What we were doing here with cottage food operations is trying to bring them more into our, with our home occupation that we already have, one. And two, there are some people who don't have any, who did not first give their health department certificates that we were concerned about. Able to sit from the. Operations. Have any other questions? Okay. And then questions? We said that the cottage food, you know, which we showed you. Yeah, it was 1999 originally, and then 2000. See, two-ish, somewhere in there, was nothing. Hourly. Not to my knowledge. I don't know if they review things when they review the judge or not. It has some different practice.
Prior to this agenda or prior to the planning? Or. So what, what type of outreach has gone on with it, other than these meetings and where the planning, the planning meeting?
It depends, or it depends on if we know somebody who might specifically be affected by it. We would not, so like the gas station one, we notified the gas station. And we knew existed, we notified individually, anyone we knew who was contacted. In this case, we have no way of knowing who may or not want to do a cottage food operation, or who may or may not. That's storage.
You might hear about a bad cottage food operator. I get a call about that, but.
We didn't.
Yeah. Do we know of storage containers that are in existence?
I know of one.
And did you reach out to that?
I did.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how do you? No, I'm enforcing.
The storage containers, all of the provisions. In the same way that we enforce everything in the city, right now, it's in place generated. I will add that I worked as maybe a little easier to do some code compliance, things like, the more that we were targeting for getting business licenses, they considered it dangerous, to know what's going on. So basically, you said the hinderness, mobile food vendors, those things, we usually give complaints about them. They're usually on some of these property, they don't have good conditions, they are offering account runs right away, and something you will call is. That is one of the reasons most of these are here, is so that when we do get a complaint, our co-compliance office, it's going, should that's for their exception, and say, this is what I'm enforcing. Right now, some of these are not clear, or they're ambiguous, or they conflicted different parts of the code.
Any public comments?
I was like, very early, 1840, Benning line. I would like to just reserve my right to offer written comments for one week so that I can read chapter 1706, which may have diverse effects on my living circumstances. That's all I'm saying.
So this is the second reading for this ordinance, so we would actually potentially be considering action on this item tonight. Two weeks ago was the first reading and public outreach, so we'll take that in consideration during the moment. Any other public comment? Then. Okay, so bringing it back, I think this does have a lot of impact on, I mean, countless different scenarios and types of businesses and effects of people in the city. And I think I would like some more time on this personally, especially because although a legal counsel has reviewed it and our co-compliance might, might be a fan of this, I would definitely like to run it by our legal counsel for obvious reasons. So I'm, I'm not a fan of this ordinance being passed tonight for those reasons. But I'll let.
What is specifically in the issue, the storage containers?
And.
How's the legal, our legal counsel?
There's new provisions, and then there are, yeah, there's.
2013, 1999.
I think I'd like to have, just, just for accountability, just to make sure that we're not, I mean, the.
Piece of money.
Yeah. Yeah. That's my reason, so that, that's what I'll speak. So I'll let everybody in.
And if, and if that's the direction we want to do, we can actually just continue this.
Okay.
And so that would just be all, uh, the all due to review, we continue it, so. Again, a continuation of our time served, so we don't have to relabel it with the grade. Does October seventeen give you guys?
You guys?
Yeah.
October seventeen?
October seventeen.
Okay, and then can I, would it be appropriate then, in the meantime, if there's anybody that we should try to notify that we know is being affected by this with an existing storage container or cottage food operation or anything, let's make sure that we do try to, not, not a lot of people come to our meetings, not a lot of people join us online, but Troy Havy won't hear from them if they're affected negatively or impacted in some way, without having gotten enough notification. So any notification we could do would be that.
I, I can only.
I do miss a test one.
I, I may miss people in the.
I know. Yeah.
We'll do it again.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
Let's do the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to continue this item, uh, to part number seventeen. Second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I come on? We have item seventeen. This is the second reading, uh, waiving the second reading, holding the public hearing, consider adopting ordinance five three eight, adding a new section seventeen point oh six two one zero addressing vacant buildings.
Mayor and council members, um, it's my understanding that you also like to continue this in order to allow for, um, the city attorney to review it. I would ask that you go ahead and provide input to that so that if there are changes to this you'd like to see, if you can express any concerns you might have, so that the council is not out to review the ordinance that you perhaps, um, find the data flawed in, if it's not worth their time, if it's not possible, and again, for public interest. I haven't answered any questions, but I have a public answer related to the vacant property codes. Yeah. So I can tell you, uh, bringing back one of these. Hypothetical, actual legal review. It would depend upon seeing if it's a change, if they're minded or.
I, yeah.
I have a legal question that I would like to have taken up with it, is that regarding the fee, um, we're talking about like a flat fee, um, to cover the cost to the city, um, I would like to know if, if we did something, um, above and beyond that, the cost of what it costs the city to go, whatever you do in these vacant buildings, um, if they, are we allowed to increase that, um, like by square meters or something like that, based on the structure of the property?
Correct. Is that legal?
Well, yeah, and if they, it goes back to. If there's a fee, then.
Correct. I want to know if the fines legally are allowed to be that, or what planes are they, I just don't know what the. Allen?
None of the fee structure for me, and then the fee versus fine. I don't want to make it small enough where it doesn't hurt, if that makes sense. I, I do, I do want people to get their business and have it full, and there were a lot of people that spoke out to have his down down, that, I'm all for it, so I don't know if a dollar a square foot, or I just don't know, four hundred dollars isn't that, I mean, there's, I can work that, so that's either each quarter.
I would like more clarification on commercial persons, but that's just gonna be my question. Real robbery, they want to structure your property, or industrial. So if I'm reading this for a day, if I have that house, they. Or excuse me, one month a year, they would then be all of them into this crap.
Unless you propose a, um, an alternative to this code, there, there are ways of waiving fee, as it were, the code enforcement officer can do that if they find that they have a local property manager who is complying with all of the local maintenance codes, there is a way for them to do it. Way around that.
So it's essentially the same.
It, it's, it was the same for everybody in here. Um, some people just, some people do commercial and residential, most of the ones that do residential do so in order to increase the cost.
And how do we come to, to this?
It's been requested for quite some time by especially property owners in the area asking to do something so that economic development would be improved, especially in this.
So not specifically what they're asking for, but we just incorporated.
We, we included residential, the primary investment came from.
I personally would like to see that more specific.
Specific or?
More specific. I'm remembering that story. I would like a residential, because I don't have any appetite for the residential, meaning any part of this. I feel that we already have code compliance, and that can, that can affect, I mean, there's always going to be the, the houses, the residential houses that are not kept up, or that are life and squatters and things like that, but code compliance is the mechanism to enforce that, and I don't have any appetite for it being in this. That's my personal.
Oh, I agree. I don't think.
So maybe that would then unfortunately warrant this being revised, have to go back to planning? Does that, is it in other shape?
Uh, it's a bit, it's a.
I, I hundred percent appreciate the economic development aspect of this and the intent, and I think downtown has spoke, um, abundantly about the need for something like this. I just don't think this, the way that this is reported is, is doing poorly. After cross, so that would be what I would be saying tonight.
Well, I'll wait for my.
So I'd like for my children that we, do we stop the public comment? I think I'd like to open it up and hear it from our public tonight and see, um, what other information they have, which we'll receive.
Hello. Julie Dennis, Practice and Campaign. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the Angels Camp Business Association. As a board, we have also reviewed, um, the potential ordinance and just to let you know we support this direction that it's going. So that is one thing that was important to the council, especially the just that we have problems. This is a number. In regards to economic development, you know, trying to, to sort of what is on the ground. Um, I have more question than comment, um, regarding the fee and fine. I felt like last meeting, there were the number, I know Amy had brought out several different numbers that she had gotten from other jurisdictions. Um, so we're talking like, I thought we talked like four hundred and fifty or something was coming out there, is that the registration fee? Or is that the fine? That was the fee to register, right? They didn't go there yet, okay. And then, uh, so we haven't really settled on the fee yet for, okay. So I'm speaking about this, um, I'm kind of, I vocalized it last time, and I think that needs to be a higher number, you know, anything as small as a penalty or whatever, but is there something, and maybe this is for legal, um, I, I was talking to somebody about this, and they said, well, the city, do we have money? And I explained, well, um, the registration money, and I thought being part of the, of the penalty, um, or fine, um, I know, I explained how this is to take care of, um, you know, these after the fire, safety, all of that, but if you do go with a higher fee as part of the funding process, could that money be used for economic development as far as, let's say, somebody does want to rent the work until, and she can actively rent it to somebody? And can they apply, and you could use for, for, or they could apply and get some of that money to start a business, or really, or any of those could do. I think that's possible, but I got just a fine. Thank you for your.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Okay, um, says, hi, my name is Sarah. I own the Lemon Street Bakery and Coffee Shop on Main Street. This week I celebrated three successful years. I am grateful to have the support of my community and am grateful to the council for their service for our city. I have two major areas of concern for our downtown and several smaller ones. First, I think there's a dire need to address the vacant buildings on Main Street. Our most iconic buildings sit empty, not because there is no one willing to occupy them, but because they are unavailable till these are bought. No occupancy equals no tax revenue for our city. Visitors often find their limited places to shop or eat. For the handful of businesses that are open, they often still overwhelm when a city hosts events. They often close early out days like this because they're unable to serve some. Establishing an ordinance that incentivizes owners of vacant, disowned properties, the lease or sell would benefit our current downtown through tax revenues and creating a customer-friendly environment. This is a great way for Angels Camp to go from a ghost town to a thriving, forward attraction. My other source of contention is the parking, so she's kind of went a little off topic, but I'm gonna read it. Uh, contention is the parking and stopping at work or lack thereof. I propose a four-hour park and move for Main Street. This allows patients time to shop or catch a movie. People are often parked in loading zones for days, sometimes making it difficult for our suppliers to deliver food. Carter parking red zone, making it difficult to see pedestrians in the crosswalk. People drive at incredible speeds through the Main Street. For the last three years, I have had full-size dog pickup trucks parked in front of my shop nearly every day. It's so large, it obstructs my signage and entire floor space. Some little things, signage at forty-nine percent four, that directs people to our downtown would be nice. Friday mornings, the city cleans downtown with a blower, a blower that soils my outside seats and fills the air with gasoline and dirt. Very unpleasant for my customers. I hope the city will take immediate action on the vacant buildings and parking downtown. In doing so, promote businesses and generate revenue. Sarah, you're so.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, me. Okay, all right. Um, I think, I think I can, I like, I just wanted to say, um, I, I do agree with, um, the council's comments on not flooding the waters with the residential, including residential in this particular ordinance, I think, I think that focus really does need to be on the commercial building that was the greatest problem I've encountered. That's what I'm saying, just for you to finish this and get it down.
Thank you. Thank you. But bringing back to council, um, our.
So question on the. So if it falls under the same thing, long as they. That's all, correct? Because even makes any longer by the order to them apply in section seventeen. As long as it's up there, windows are not broke out for twenty-four hours, something that can be put over broken door, the residential falls under the same exact. Question.
Do you know what things, what things?
Correct.
Thinking, meaning, history, what did. Except that, unless, if the person officer. A lot of the.
And then on the same thing, I have to do a question about what's going on. So, like, this number we're doing, where, I, I, where was that money?
It, yeah, well, the fee, right, we're talking about.
Right, he goes, fine.
Just.
Right.
The fine. And I think, like. That. For, for so fast.
Right.
Cause I'm glad I get more to the. First, you do the. Well, the. Do you have? Do you? Have a. Are doing. For sale? We absolutely. There's a fee. The law, right now, is only helping. Right now, phones have. Off. One. Not. There are also provisions that we can have for rent, all sorts of stuff. And since there are a few.
Okay, sound. Thank you for the fraction. Eight four first night. Judge, do we need a motion? Afternoon to the introduction of the council, please pass. For the expression of. Right. Fine. Fine. That's it. Thank you. That's it. What are your thoughts? Do you read any? Yeah. Uh, Lucy, I, um, I make up my mind, excuse me, for the practice job with the representative. First, okay, for the residential. Order.
And then. By the definition. From my other ways. I will second. Okay. Bye.
Good.
I am seven. Resolution twenty six. Award contract to Barlow Wells Associates and operate city administrator next to office. Three documents to proceed with water and sewer rate set. Um, it's so several months ago. Several questions. Okay. Those questions. Donald. Six. But. Of course, they're seven. Then, seven. Actually. Fine. Oh. Oh.
Yeah.
I need to. Yeah. So. Oh. But. I wanted. Yep. So. 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 Done. Would I? And they. Then. So. One. Um. This. This was our.
And.
Yeah. I was three. Look. The body. Seven. Again. I. Fuck. Here. It's a work we did in itself. So that will bring. It's. We get it. I'd like to be able to point. Okay. Uh. I mean, the. And I go down the line.
Make a wish. Bye.
It is to approve the amendment. Uh. Oh, sorry. But. Sorry, I. I have people on there. I don't even know. Um. The item is brought before you starting the police keep contract. Uh, this is an amendment to the original contract. Um, you guys started negotiations that month ago. And we all agreed to include the following. The increase, the uniform allowance by a hundred. Uh, additions of longevity pay to be calculated at two and a half. Following the five years city employment. Uh. Along with incentive pay for post management certificate and post. Uh, executive certificate for a maximum of five percent. Uh, vacation allowance about to be. Well, I will say that I saw the contract with a whole lot of other changes. Right? So I did check with. Yeah. And, um. And. Clean up papers. Yeah. I read everything. I thought. It happened. That question. Yes. Members of the public? You've seen this. Promotion to. All in favor?
Hi.
Bye bye. Pass this for us. We're ready. Okay. And eight. To approve resolution twenty three seventy eight. Granting authority for the city administrators to plan and to place an employee above step three. So before you resolve resolution twenty three seventy eight. Allowing the city administrator to hire employees above step three. So the city has been recruiting for the plant operators three since March of this year. We recently conducted an interview and have found a qualified candidate. However, they're asking to start at a higher pace. So, um, this is the item that I'm bringing for you. If you would. About. Complete the staff for water waste. Okay, questions? Other comments? For resolution twenty three seventy.
Seventy. Resolution twenty seven eighty.
Next. Make good on the terms.
Bye.
Perfect. Okay. Item eight is our. So this is several important. Uh, so one is. We're lying. The. Look. Look. Where's the stuff? Got everything. That is. President. I'm here. Look off the. I'll grab. But we learned the workshop. So the city's been out. Shout out to. Well. Probably. Quite beneficial. Need. You know, this is. And. Company. Done. Uh, the citizens. Four or five. Um.
Yeah.